All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here today. We'll get started with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. So we would ask folks to stand if you are willing and able. And we welcome down, I think it's Charlie Davidson to the front.
You're correct.
There we go.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Let's tie our heads and have a word of prayer this morning. God, I just thank you, very thankful this morning that you're the God of this city and that you're the God of this nation, Lord. And thank you for loving all of us, Lord, and that we're made in your image and sending your one and only Son to die on the cross for our sins so that, believing in you, we can have eternal life with our Creator, Lord. We just thank you for that. God, I thank you for these leaders behind me, the mayor and the council, Lord, that you just gave them the willing to step forward and be leaders in the community and run for office. And, Lord, today is a primary election day, and I thank you for the opportunity that community members have to come and vote, and we can work together as council and community to lead such a great city. I pray for our department directors, the city manager, other department directors, Lord, that you continue to give them insight and wisdom. God, we're right in the heartbeat of this nation, and we can be a mighty force, a mighty light in this community, in this country. And I pray that you continue to give wisdom and guidance to all these leaders as they continue to lead such a great city. We pray and ask all this. In Jesus' precious and holy name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks, Charlie. Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of regular meeting on July 27, 2021.
All right, has every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on the minutes, then I'll make the motion to pass the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Obtaining seven votes, that motion does pass. Or seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamation, Sibotin Club of Wichita Day.
All right, there are members here today to receive the Sibotin Club of Wichita proclamation. Please make way forward. Picture comes out better when I have someone else that can hand this off to, so. Glad you're here. All right, so proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the Sibotin Club of Wichita, which was chartered on August 9, 1921, whereas the Sibotin Club of Wichita has provided, over the past hundred years, thousands of hours of service to benefit the citizens of our community, whereas the Sibotin Club of Wichita's main emphasis is supporting programs to assist persons with intellectual disabilities and other developmental challenges. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim August 9, 2021, as Sibotin Club of Wichita Day, an observance of the 100th anniversary of this chartering.
I would just like to thank our city council members and the mayor for declaring this as Sibotin Club of Wichita Day. I would like to say that there's a couple of things that were kind of a secret here in the city. But back in the very early 80s, our club was responsible for getting curb cuts in accessibility early, way before any law requiring it. And that came about because we had one of our members who was an employee of the city and convinced the city fathers to spend the day in a wheelchair. And they learned how many barriers there were. And so we were proud to have those early curb cuts in the 80s here in our city. And the other thing I wanted to say is that our club currently meets in a building that was built in 1922, which was an old fire station. And at that time, it was so unique, it's over in the Riverside area, that people as far away as Chicago came to see the building because it's bungalow style. We appreciate everything you have done. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Public agenda, Sybil Strum being picked on by the community.
Now going to our public agenda, folks who have signed up have five minutes. Is Ms. Strum here? If there's no objection, we'll skip over Ms. Strum. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, the second speaker just called this morning and canceled also.
Second speaker is canceled. Madam Clerk.
Tremaine Longer applauding Wichita for having good people run for election.
Ms. Longer. Is Longer here? Madam Clerk.
Mary Catherine Vernon, climate change.
Ms. Vernon. Okay, we do have one. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Whipple.
Good morning.
And city council members. My name is Mary Catherine Vernon, and I live in Midtown, Wichita. In 2017, I spoke here about the subject of climate change. Since then, as far as I know, the city has not done anything appreciable in that direction to mitigate the effects of climate change. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. Before I start, please turn off your phones and tablets and put them away. I would like your full attention. Evolution seemed to be humming along for us humans. About 250,000 years ago, we learned to use and make tools, and fire, and to cook our food. Since then, we have learned to cultivate crops and domesticate animals. Then about 4,000 years ago, humans in China and in North America discovered and learned to use coal as an energy source. Then with the discovery of oil in 1859, and the invention of the combustion engine in 1860, we were off and running. It seemed there was no stopping us. And with our progress came greenhouse gases, which entered the atmosphere exponentially, creating global warming. Scientists first recognized this phenomenon in the late 19th century. Today, we have wildfires raging, torrential rains, flooding, droughts, hurricanes, extension of species, crop failures, and mass human migration worldwide on a catastrophic scale. The Earth's axis has shifted 30 feet in the last century, a result of melting ice. And climate scientists say that the Earth's vital signs are close to or have surpassed tipping points. If we don't reduce CO2 and methane emissions, soon, the Earth will become uninhabitable. Most of you are probably aware of all this, but I suspect you haven't let it sink in. It's a hard fact to face. After all, we have had some pleasant weather this spring, but it's especially hard because it means that we and our children and their children are to, if we, excuse me, if we and our children, if we and our children and their children are to thrive or even to survive in future, we will have to dramatically change the way we live, and we don't want to do that. We humans are responsible for trashing the planet, and yet we aren't willing to stop and clean up our mess. We want more. It's not our fault. We're wired that way. It's a survival mechanism. But we are still responsible for the damage we have done, and we're responsible for using our minds and instincts to find ways to fix it and to change the way we do things. I am here to ask every member of the city council and the mayor to take responsibility for doing our part as a city in reducing our CO2 and methane emissions to zero, to place that goal at the forefront of every single decision you make. You owe it to every citizen of this city and to every citizen of the world. You all have a choice. You can scoff at what I've said, ignore what climate scientists have been saying for over 100 years, and proceed with your plans to develop the economy, which is what got us into this mess in the first place. Or you can do what's right for the common good. In a true economy that reflects the welfare of the people, one in which everyone has a roof over his head, food to eat, clothing to wear, and healthcare, as well as education, there would be plenty of jobs to go around. There's certainly plenty of work to do. My first suggested step is to set up an electric climate change mitigation board composed of concerned citizens to guide the city council and mayor in all decisions involving materials or processes which produce CO2 or methane emissions in their production or end product. In 20 years' time, will we have failed as a species to adapt and evolve? Will we be near extinction, struggling desperately to survive? Or will we have humbly taken our places among all other forms of life on Earth, cleaning up our mess, knowing that to have enough is enough? Thanks for the opportunity to speak today, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. It has Sybil Strum. If not, it has Tremaine Longer. Madam Clerk.
Jalen Britton, nondiscrimination ordinance.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Mr. Vice Mayor, rest of the council members. My name is Jalen Britton. I live on 2921 North Governor Street. I don't know much, but this much I do. My God is an awesome God, and I'm thankful for the man that he has raised me into today. I'm an unashamed Christian, and I preach the gospel every chance I get. Lately, I have been ashamed of the people who have spoken in this chamber over their concerns regarding the NDO. They all start off saying, "I'm a Christian, and I have nothing against the gay community." But, but briefly after that brief conjunction, there's hatred, comments, and just evil things coming out of people mouths. And it hurts to sit and listen to that for 11-plus hours. There are plenty of footage and arches of this one side condemning another. Evil comes in shapes, all shapes and forms. Some people have said that accepting gay people was a direct approval, accepting pedophiles. With that statement alone, this NDO should have passed a long time ago. Some members of this council voted for workshops and more time to listen to both sides of the issue. Ninety days in workshops can't fix the hate that has been in some of people's hearts all their lives. I believe that it is important to understand that loving your neighbors is not just a simple task as a Christian. It requires us to be selfless. It requires us to show compassion and kindness to others. Religious freedom gives us the right to live our lives according to our own beliefs and principles. People in this house need to start using my God and an excuse to discriminate against and impose belief on others who may not share those same beliefs as us. Religion was used and scriptures were read when people that look like me was kidnapped, sold, beaten, and raped. Religion was used to justify slavery, segregation, and interracial and gay marriages. My own representative, Patrick Penn, was in this chamber here today, weeks ago, and he was booing and cheering while different people spoke against the NDO. That can't stand. Jim Crow ended only 60 years ago. I'm glad the few council members who recommended 90 more days of hate wasn't in legislation back then, or I probably wouldn't be allowed to speak here today. Especially if we stopped and listened to both sides. Here we are in 2021, still fighting the same battles. The Word of God is not a weapon to use for discrimination, is a tool to uplift and encourage people. This might shock some of you in this chamber today, but all the NDO is asking is that we have civil rights for all and treat others with respect. I am a 27-year-old heterosexual African-American, Christian young man, father of three, husband of one, and I favor the NDO because it protects me too. I hope when this is brought up in October, appropriate action is taken with more teeth. I don't know much, but this much I do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Has every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to pull item number eight.
Item number eight will be pulled and placed directly under the consent agenda. Is there any discussions for items 1 through 9 with the exception of eight? If there is no discussion, I will make the motion to pass items 1 through 9 with the exception of eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open a roll. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. On to item eight. Chair recognizes the Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a potential conflict of interest, I need to abstain from this item.
Well, the record showed the Vice Mayor is abstaining due to a potential conflict of interest. Is there any further discussion on item eight? If there is no further discussion on item eight, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract amendment providing for an extension of time for project completion, authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Sorrello. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. The result of six yays to one abstain, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Report of Board of Bids and Contracts dated August 2, 2021.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Hannah Lang, Department of Finance, for the August 2 Board of Bid Recommendations. First engineering bid we have is Wichita Valley Center Upylovi C Tow Drain Phase 2. Recommendation is Brad Dody Construction for $597,828. Paving Botanica Parking Lot Expansion, Conco Incorporated, for the base bid of $470,555.90. Paving Sycamore Sidewalk, all bids rejected. Fire hose with Couplings S&amp;H Acquisition for $218,648.10. HVAC Equipment, no bids were received. This is our purchasing procurement website, as well as our current open request for proposals. That is the Board of Bids recommendations. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there questions of staff? Any questions for staff? Is there input from the public? See none. Discussion will come back to the bench. Is there discussion on the item? If there is no further discussion on the item, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yays. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Asbestos remediation project, close out three downtown buildings.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the city council. Mark Gelder with the Office of Economic Development. The item before you today is to close out three asbestos remediation projects as part of a multi-building project downtown. The three buildings that received the asbestos remediation were Broadway Plaza, or the former Broadway Plaza, 105 South Broadway, the former Henry's Building at 124 South Broadway, and the former Sutton Place at 209 East William. I say former as it will probably all be renamed as part of the redevelopment project that's currently occurring. Just some renderings of the outside of the buildings. There's not really much attractive about asbestos remediation, but at least want to give the visual of what buildings we're referring to. When these remediation projects were first approved as part of the overall project, which included the redevelopment of these buildings into a DO, school, and other education campuses, back in 2019, we again approved maximum assessments for these projects. And so on the middle column there, you can see the maximum assessment of a little over $1,265,000. The final projects came in a little bit lower than that at $1,257,185,000, which is why we're now adjusting those projects today. This overall project, which included the former State Office Building, but since that project did not have asbestos to remediate, started the discussion today, but included the redevelopment of that building in the Kansas Health Science Center, which will become a doctor of osteopathy school. The criteria for reimbursement of this asbestos was laid out in an MOU as well as an agreement, but it required certificates of the asbestos being remediated by a professional, as well as for the 105 South Broadway Building, which was the former Broadway Plaza, also required the executed lease and franchise agreement for a Marriott AC flag. We did receive both that lease agreement as well as the certificates of remediation completion in order to close out these projects. The final project costs are listed below here with the remediation, as well as the additional financing cost for each building. You can see their totals below on each one for that total assessment that all equal that $1,257,000. Again, with this one, because the final project costs were lower than the original approved maximum amount, we're here today to adjust those with an amended assessment ordinance. With this, these assessments will be spread against the buildings over 15 years. That bond rent will be sold in the upcoming bond sale over a 15-year period with these special assessments being secured against those buildings. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Are there questions of staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public? See none? Is there discussion from the bench? If there's no discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the final statements of cost, place the ordinance on first reading, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open a roll. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Acceptance of the Advancing Health Literacy to Enhance Equitable Community Response to COVID-19 Grant.
Welcome.
Morning, Mayor Whipple. Members of the Wichita City Council, Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager. Pleased to be here with you this morning, asking your approval to accept the Advancing Health Literacy to Enhance Equitable Community Responses to COVID-19 Grant. In October 2020, Cedric County awarded CARES Act funds to the Wichita Black Alliance to lock, to launch the #FactsNotFair campaign. The campaign included TV and radio commercials, geofencing through digital ads, billboards, print advertisement and flyers, free mass distribution events, social media marketing, and a series of virtual town hall meetings that included mental and physical health professionals. Earlier this year, representatives of the Wichita Black Alliance and Community Connections Consulting worked closely to develop and submit a grant application modeled after the successful #FactsNotFair campaign. With the support of community partners such as Cedric County, KU Med School, Department of Public Health, Hunter Health, Grace Med, Health Corps Clinic, and others, the grant application proposed to fund a community-driven expansion of the #FactsNotFair campaign to reach a broader cross-section of underserved populations throughout the community. Since the grant application, we've badged or named the grant project as #FactsNotFairICT. On June 21, the Department of Health and Human Services notified the city manager's office that the city had been awarded the maximum $4 million in grant funding. The city received feedback from HHS, is a grant external review panel, that highlighted the strengths of the proposed program. Those strengths included the City of Wichita presented a strong case for support and demonstrates that they have the capacity to successfully implement the project and expand the Wichita Black Alliance's #FactsNotFair campaign. Also, the city identified professional community advocates to take the lead, to inform the community about the importance of becoming vaccinated, vaccinated, and other mitigation strategies. The Department of Health and Human Services expects awardees to demonstrate effectiveness of working with community-based organizations to improve health literacy and health outcomes related to COVID-19. HHS also requires awarding projects to utilize class standards for culturally and linguistically appropriate services, standards for communication, to identify populations at the highest risk for health disparities and low health literacy, as well as populations not currently reached through existing public health campaigns. If the city were to accept the grant, the city would serve as the grant fiscal agent. An advisory board composed of community stakeholders with an interest in health outcomes and underserved communities will help lead the project and ensure grant allocation, support program objectives related to health disparities, health equity, and health literacy. Community Connections Consulting would serve as the program administrator. It would develop, coordinate, and maintain systems-level and organizational-level partnerships in support of the grant, identify, manage, and oversee grant research, quality improvement, and project evaluation efforts. In addition, Community Connections Consulting would hire and manage project and program staff, oversee community engagement and outreach efforts, as well as support project marketing, communications, and community outreach efforts. The grant does not include a city match requirement. The grant does allow the city to charge an indirect cost rate not to exceed 4.11% during the grant period. The two-year total of the indirect cost would be $164,000. Indirect costs are intended to cover administrative expenses incurred by the city during the grant period. The terms of the grant award and the contract with Community Connections Consulting Services, LOC, are approved as deformed by the Law Department. And I am pleased to recommend that the city council authorize the acceptance of the grant award, approve the contract with Community Connections Consulting Services, and authorize necessary signatures. Mayor, with your permission, I would like to invite Dr. Iblaw from the Mayor, with your permission, I would like to invite Dr. Avllo from the KU School of Medicine, Department of Public Health, and Teresa Lovelady from Health Corps Clinic to provide comments about the work they're doing in our community and how it connects to the grant award. I also, if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'd like to recognize Representative Gail Finney, who's in the audience and part of the Wichita Black Alliance, in support of this project.
Of course.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Vice Mayor. Good morning, City Council members, and thank you very much, Dante. I'm Elizabeth Avllo. I am a professor at the University of Kansas School of Medicine in Wichita. I'm in the Department of Population Health, and I'm very excited to be here this morning. I just want to tell you a little bit about some of the work that we've been doing and how that relates to this potential grant opportunity that is, I think, really a great opportunity for us to consider. The first project that we did was several months ago in February, and we started that with the Health Department in Sedgwick County. They wanted us to do two surveys that were to assess the attitudes and the behaviors of residents of seven counties, including Sedgwick County. And so we have those results, and we've shared that. That has informed very closely what Sedgwick County Health Department has done in terms of helping to increase the amount of testing and increase vaccines in the city of Wichita and the county, as well as six other counties that have been doing this work. We also, I'm a part of a, I'm an investigator of a National Institutes of Health, or NIH, grant that is called RADXUP. That is Rapid Acceleration of Diagnostics Among Underserved Populations. We have 10 counties in the state that we work with where it's a community-engaged initiative, and the intent of that initiative is to increase testing among underserved populations. We have been very engaged, and Sedgwick County is one of those counties, one of the 10 that, so much so that Kansas Department of Health and Environment wanted us to be a part of a grant that they received from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And that project is now with 20 counties, and Sedgwick County is one of those. Again, a very much community-engaged, but rather than a focus on testing for underserved populations, it's testing and vaccines for underserved populations. So we have a wider scope. We have, I was privileged to be able to work with Councilmember Johnson on a very small sliver of a #FactsNotFear campaign in Wichita, and very excited to have been a part of that through the Kansas Leadership Centers project. And then finally, we have been in consult with the Community Connections Consulting Services, and there are so many possible areas for overlap that we really have a great opportunity for all of these funding sources from National Institutes of Health, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and now HHS, to really bring a lot of these efforts together and have coordinated efforts, again, with the Health Department in Sedgwick County, among others across the state, to have a very coordinated effort. So I really encourage you to accept this proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Sorry, still a new system. I was just going to make a comment that I wanted to really thank the staff for being so forward-leading and applying for this opportunity, and then also to thank you, Dr. Avllo, one of my dear friends, and we've had the opportunity to work on public health projects in the past, and then also Chris Stewart with the Sedgwick County Division of Health, and then also Teresa Lovelady, thank you for taking the lead on this and for partnering with us. This is such an important topic, and many people don't understand the concept of health literacy, so thank you for bringing it to our community, and I'll look forward to seeing the results. Thank you.
Happy to partner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and, I'm sorry, goodness, now I'm nervous. Chamber members, and I'm really nervous. See, I just kind of had a throwback moment from our commercial moments in the studio. But thank you, everyone, for the opportunity. Thank you, Dante, and thank you, Angelina, for taking on and spearheading this opportunity for our community. I can tell you that, oh, my name's Teresa Lovelady, and I'm representing Health Corps Clinic, but also a community member as well. I can tell you that COVID-19, we know it was a global pandemic that not only hit the world hard, it hit the United States hard, it hit our state hard, it hit our county hard, it hit our city hard, but it hit many communities disproportionately. I'd like to say it kind of ripped the Band-Aid off, and it took the blinders off, and it made us really realize some of the health inequalities and disparities that exist in our communities today. We saw many disparities when it came to screening, when it came to testing, when it came to employment, when it came to housing, just so many disparities across the board. When we look at the social determinants of health, just the core basics of just our quality of life, right? When we look how COVID-19 really exasperated all of our lives and touched each of us. If it didn't touch us directly, it touched our place of employment, it touched someone in our family, it touched us in some way or the other. It touched our kids in school. Our kids couldn't go to school, we had to homeschool. So with this Office of Minority Health Grant and the opportunity to provide health literacy and resources to help us promote informed decision-making as we move forward, that's the part of the grant, for me, that is most interesting, is how do we improve our ability to make decision-making, I mean, to make decisions with limited resources? And that's one of the things that we saw that helped, well, that was part of the, that really exasperated the disparities at some points, is how we made decisions with limited resources. So I believe this grant opportunity is really going to collect and help us get data with Dr. Avllo and all of the other resources and all of the other tools and all of the other things that are going to be happening in our community to help us get the, it's just going to be one tool. It's not going to be the only thing, but one tool of many tools that's going to be needed to help us make better decisions with our limited resources. When I think about Health Corps Clinic's response, and Health Corps Clinic, along with Grace Med, Hunter Health, and Guadalupe Clinic, and along with the County Health Department, being on Wesley and Via Christi Hospital Systems, it was really rough being on the front lines and seeing and touching the lives of many people, whether they had insurance, they didn't have insurance, wherever they were, whether they were an essential employee, non-essential employee. I mean, COVID really touched us all. We had to band together, whether we knew we were going to get resources or not, and we had to do the very best we could for our community. I believe that this opportunity will allow us to reach across all demographics, all ethnicities, to really collect the data needed to help us make better decisions. So thank you so very much for the opportunity. I believe together is the only way that we'll be able to really improve health outcomes in our community and improve some of the disparities, including those health disparities, and really help our community move forward to improve and have a better quality of life for everyone. Together, I believe we can promote a better community, a healthier community, across all sectors. So thank you so very much for the opportunity. If you have any specific questions, I can tell you that Health Corps Clinic, along with the other community clinics, are supportive of this initiative, and we really can't wait to see kind of what comes with this. And thank you so very much, Angelina, for leading this, and we trust the process. Any questions?
See none. Thank you.
Well, thank you so very much.
Chair, recognize the Honorable Representative Finney.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. It's good to see all of you again. I don't want to duplicate anything that's going to be said about this grant opportunity, but what I, my position today is, as the State Representative Gail Finney of the 84th District, I came here to attest of the support and also support the Wichita Black Alliance of what they have done so far to educate our community about the COVID-19, and they've done an outstanding job getting masks and doing town hall meetings and building the awareness. Right now, with the disproportionate effect of the COVID virus on the African-American community and other minority communities, I think it's important that we expand what they're doing. And I also think it's important that this grant is going to be extending what the Black Alliance have started with the black community and taking it to the other communities. From what I have witnessed is that the community has become much more aware because of the social media campaign, the #FactsNotFear campaign, and they have done a wonderful job reaching out to all the different businesses, putting out signs all over the community. And I haven't seen a business yet that hasn't had an excess of masks in their offices to hand out. So I'm here today to ask for your support and approval, and I want to thank you all in advance for approval of this grant, because it's going to make a big difference in diminishing the COVID in the minority communities, and it also is going to help Wichita put us up on a map. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Representative. Further discussion from the public? Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and everyone else on City Council. I am Lawanda DeShazer, and you've all heard the facts, so I won't go over any data, anything like that. I'm going to come to you from a citizen perspective. You know, the thing that drove the COVID-19 and our numbers up, it was fear, you know? And so the #FactsNotFear campaign helped people to understand that it's okay, we can talk about it, and when you have someone that looks like you to be able to explain what's going on, it helps with that fear. And that's what the Black Alliance was able to accomplish, and with this grant, we can do the same thing in the Hispanic community, the Asian community, all the other vulnerable communities. So again, when you have someone that looks like you, that can explain what's going on and tell you, it's okay, you can get vaccinated, or you can wear a mask, I think it goes a long way. And so with that in mind, I ask you to accept the grant and throw your support in, and let's fight COVID, let's fight this variant, and let's move forward so we can get to a new normalcy that we all have been looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the public? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. This is a great opportunity, if approved, to, as we heard, expand the work that the Black Alliance did last year into other minority communities. But going a little deeper, we've been hearing the real impact of changed behaviors, and that was one of the concerns last year, folks going out without masks or not knowing the importance of it or having that. We've seen and we've heard folks that changed their behaviors because of the campaign that the Black Alliance did. There were folks who went and got vaccinated because of the town halls that the Black Alliance put on, having local doctors that they knew and trusted that spoke to the science of the vaccine, acknowledging that they all took the vaccine. There were folks who then went to go get vaccinated at various clinics because of the information that they heard. And so I'm excited about the potential opportunity to expand that into other communities, make sure that we're putting the facts out for the community to understand and to see the ability to ask questions of professionals, not just the elected. Sometimes they look at us, but looking at the professionals that are out there doing the work. So I am supportive, and I think this is a great opportunity over the next two years to really turn the corner here in Wichita, and it was mentioned by one of the speakers, but nationally, I have not heard of another community that has been doing the work that the Black Alliance has done and looking at the expansion efforts right now. So Wichita could potentially be a national leader in our response from this grant.
Mr. Vice Mayor, there is no one else on the speaker's list. Thus, would you like to retain the floor for our motion?
Thanks, Mayor. I would move that we authorize the acceptance of the grant award, approve the contract with Community Connections Consulting Services, and authorize the necessary signatures.
I'm happy to second. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Land acquisition for new Patrol East Station.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilors. I'm Gordon Ramsey, the police chief, and here to talk about the land acquisition for the new East Station. As you are aware, this has been a project that is long in the works, first put in CIP around 2001. The current building was built in 1988. It was initially planned for 30 to 40 officers. Now more than 100 officers work there. We currently share the location at Cypress Park with the Wichita Fire Department. There are some current issues with the building that include flooding, lack of locker space, very tight corridors, and the building just currently is not practical for modern-day policing. Officers frequently have to go home to change their clothes. The locker, what officers do have lockers, and it's probably about a third of the officers, it's essentially just a cubby. So as you know, and we've talked about, this is a significant concern for the police operations, and our recommendation is for a new station. Obviously, last year, there was some issues with Cypress Park, concern over the amount of land space that it took up in the park. We began looking and working with neighbors and community partners and found the best location was at the old Southeast High School. It was ranked highly among other locations because of its centralized location and neighborhood impact, putting us closer to the people that we serve, including areas that have increased crime. The new building takes into account for the growth of that station, which is 100-plus, and well, is accommodate future growth, and it will act more as a station house versus a substation. Currently, the day-to-day business oftentimes brings people to City Hall. This station will allow officers to stay at the neighborhood station and work there and do interviews and investigations there without having to come to City Hall. The location is ideal for us. It is near fuel source and major roads that allow for quick response times. The new station will also have space available for community uses. The community engagement effort was multifaceted, that included city staff, targeted immediate neighborhoods surrounding the proposed site, as well as school district stakeholders. We knocked on over 200 doors of the community. Surveys were administered. Open houses were conducted virtually, and neighbors were encouraged to submit feedback electronically. No concerns have been shared regarding the site selection thus far. DAB 3 was very supportive and appreciated the community engagement, and unanimously approved the conditional use permit. A little bit on the background. Ben?
Welcome.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Chris Sewell, Facilities Division Manager, Public Works, standing in for Ben Nelson today. Here you see the evaluation that was done last year, that was done with staff, WPD, and the architect, which graded all those various sites on operational characteristics, as well as cost and buildability. Cypress, the old Central and Bristol site that was originally intended for Patrol East almost 20 years ago, as well as a vacant armory facility, all scored much lower than the Southeast High School site. Anyone who's driven by the old Southeast site, this is directly west of where the AMAC center is. This project will be done under a modified construction management at-risk approach. The guaranteed maximum price will be submitted with the contractor's response to the RFP. We're doing this primarily as a cost control, given the limited budget to execute this project. We've already developed, I think, close to 15 or more alternates that we have to consider as part of this design in order to make sure we get the operational characteristics that WPD needs within this facility, built within the budget that we have. And then last year, per the city requirement, the RFP criteria was approved. Here's the original budget and timeline for the $7 million project. Roughly $5.8 was the original estimate for just construction with Roughly 5.8 was the original estimate for just construction, with the remainder of that items that are more under control by the city, they're not under the general contractor's contract. And then also, as mentioned in the agenda item in the narrative, the proposed CIP this year includes an additional possible $3 million to account for the current market status of construction. Due to the pandemic and a number of reasons, prices have gone up considerably as of right now. So that additional funding will make sure that we are able to build the station that we have, but we don't have to execute it right now. It's more there just in case that prices don't come down enough. Here's the current design. As I said, it was just west of AMAC. Landscaping is conceptual. And then the purchase of the, this specific agenda item is actually just about the purchase of the land. We need five acres to execute this project, and the covenant only allows certain uses on that. That's part of the conditional use permit that was approved last year and is conditional on the purchase of the land. And with that, staff is recommending that the real estate purchase agreement be approved, and we'll stand for any questions.
Questions of staff? Can you go back to Slide 40? Is our, on the picture to the right, is our facility in such bad shape that we now have critters taking over the hall? Is that a feral animal I think I see? Very sad it's gotten to this. Glad we're addressing it today on the agenda. Is there any input from the public? Is there any discussion from the bench? Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to thank WPD Chief, Staff, Bob, Dante, everyone, for their work on this. We heard quite a bit from the Cypress neighborhood as we were looking at Cypress Park, and it was just good to see the engagement and working with our community on a solution. There were a few neighborhood folks who mentioned using the AMAC space, as well as staff looking at it. It's glad to see the engagement and knocking doors. I love knocking doors, so glad to see when staff's doing it and also engaging in District 3 prior to Councilmember Sorrello being appointed. But it's glad to see all that engagement, a lot of hard work. I think this is a great solution. I've heard from many of the neighbors since that are excited about the potential of having police still very close to them, within the neighborhood, just a quarter mile away, and law enforcement still being able to access Kellogg's. So I think this was a win-win for everyone, and again, just appreciate all the hard work that went into it.
All right, there's no further discussion. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Sorrello of District 3.
Thank you, Mayor, and I would echo Councilmember Vice Mayor Johnson's comments. This has been a long time coming, and I think this process started back when I was first starting my term on DAB-3, so that's going back four to five years. So it's been an up-and-down roller coaster, that's for sure, but I am pleased to make a motion that the City Council approve the real estate purchase agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
I will second it. No discussion. Clerk open a roll. Members cast the vote. Last of all members cast the vote?
Thank you.
All right, with a result of seven yays to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today, I want to present to you the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or what we like to refer to as the annual report. The annual report includes audited financial statements for the city of Wichita. It's filed with a variety of entities, including the state of Kansas, several federal granting agencies, and the Municipal Securities Rate Making Board. That's important for bond disclosures, and so we file it with them. The annual report is used by a variety of entities as well. One of the more important ones are our rating agencies, our bondholders, and our prospective bondholders. They rely on it for audited financial information when they are evaluating the city's financial status. It's also available for citizens and residents and a variety of other interested parties. The annual report is posted to the city's website at www.wichita.gov under the Finance Some highlights of some of the sections in the annual report. We have an introductory section, which is basically a overview for management on the city of Wichita from a financial standpoint. Then we have the financial section, which includes the auditor's opinion, which Tara will talk about in a couple minutes. It also includes a section we call MDNA, or Management Discussion and Analysis. That is really management's review of our audited financial results. And then we have the financial statements, and those are relatively voluminous. There's a variety of notes that go along with those that are actually quite interesting. And finally, I'll point out, we have a statistical section towards the back of the book. There's a lot of really good information there. We have 10 years of data on a variety of metrics. We've got some interesting information about our city debt, and we've got a variety of other information in that section. So the annual report is required by a state statute. We are required to have a certified public accounting firm perform that work for us. The city's external auditor is Alan Gibbs and Hulick, who we like to call AGH. They are our external auditor. They perform the work, and then they report that work to you, which we will do momentarily. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Assurance Vice President of AGH, Tara Loughlin. Tara Loughlin is our partner in the audit, and she's going to go over the audit results for you.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Tara Loughlin. I'm a Vice President at AGH in our Government Services practice. Before I get into the results of the audit, I just want to thank Mark, Nikki, the whole finance team, as well as many individuals throughout other departments of the city that assist us during the audit process. A lot of additional work goes in during audit time on top of normal day-to-day responsibilities, so we appreciate everybody's at the city's cooperation to get through that process. Audit standards require that we communicate certain items with the governing body annually. The first one of those that I'm going to go over today is significant accounting estimates. Not all numbers within the financial statements are hard, fast, known numbers. There is estimation processes involved. The city's significant accounting estimates consist of items like incurred but not reported claims for the city's self-insurance program, net pension, other post-employment benefit liabilities related to employee benefit programs, as well as a few accrued liabilities related to environmental pollution, landfill cleanup costs, and allowance on accounts receivable. There's been no new significant accounting estimates from last year within the financial statements, and the methodologies used by management to determine those estimates has not significantly changed. Our responsibility related to those estimates is to obtain an understanding about how management determines those items, and then we review the inputs, calculations, and outputs of those estimates to make sure that they are reasonable. And in all cases, we did find that those significant accounting estimates are reasonable. The city also implemented a few new accounting standards that was required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. These mostly related to debt disclosures and how to account for interest. The most significant impact of these new standard implementation is going to be in the debt disclosure footnote, so as users read through the debt disclosures, they will see some additional information related to private placement debt and detailing out certain financing components of those private placement debt arrangements. Overall, for the financial statement audit, we had no financial statement findings. We also proposed no audit adjustments during the audit process, and we had no disagreements with management or any significant issues that came up during the audit process. As a result, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, or clean opinion, which means the financial statements materially reflect the books and records of the city, and also, as Mark had pointed out, it ensures compliance, the city's compliance with certain laws and regulations. Leading into the compliance of laws and regulations is also the federal single audit, which we perform in conjunction with the financial statement audit. Any non-federal entity that expends more than $750,000 in federal awards in a given year is required to do a single audit. The city, of course, is above that threshold annually. The federal government provides us guidelines on how to risk assess which specific grant programs we are going to subject to audit. This year, through that risk assessment process, we selected three programs. Two of them relate to new COVID funding, the main coronavirus relief funding, the coronavirus supplemental funding, and the federal transit cluster. The results of the single audit is also within the annual report in Section H. We did issue unmodified or clean opinions on all three grant programs as well. So in summary, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial and the single audits, and I again just want to thank Mark, Nikki, and the finance team for their help throughout the audit process. Any questions?
Questions for staff? See none. You guys covered everything. Mark, go ahead.
I just want to follow up with one more comment. Like Tara said, I'd also like to acknowledge Nikki Babcock and Christina Rose in the Controller's Office. They spend an extraordinary amount of time on this project in May and June. It's very comprehensive, and they do a fantastic job. Also wanted to talk just very briefly about GASB-89. We usually don't talk about GASBs, and I'm sure you'd be really interested in a long discussion on it, but I'll save you that today. But I do want to just point out that that requires us to report capitalized interest a little differently than what we had in the past, and we will have to incorporate that into our pro formas for the water and sewer utility, but we're coordinating with staff, and we will do that next time you see a pro forma. So with that, the recommended action is to receive and file, and if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to address them.
All right. Is there any input from the public? See none. We'll have discussion back at the bench. Is there any discussion on this item? See none. With that, I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2020. There a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk open a roll. Members cast the vote. With a total of seven yays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
2021 Water and Sewer Cost of Service Analysis.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Penny Feis, Public Works and Utilities. Here this morning to discuss the 2021 Water and Sewer Cost of Service Analysis, or what we would like to refer to as the COSA. Just real briefly, a cost of service analysis is a study that examines the different customer classes that comprise the water and sewer utilities. That's residential, business or commercial, industrial, and wholesale, and evaluates the cost it takes to serve those customers, and it helps proportion the revenue requirement amongst those classes. We last, excuse me, we last completed one in 2015. Industry recommends that this be completed every three to five years. So obviously, some time has passed and some conditions have changed, and so in March of this year, we issued an RFP for this study to be completed. We received four proposals in May, and we interviewed all four proposers in June. This went through the typical staff screening and selection committee process with four members from Public Works, three from finance, and one from law comprising the committee. The proposals were evaluated on this selection criteria, and NewGen Strategies and Solutions was the preferred proposer. Their estimated fee is $135,620, and this would be funded by the Water and Sewer Utilities. We briefly discussed how the key objective is to ensure cost-based rates are being maintained, but they'll also take a look at previous water demand, help us update our sales forecast, make sure our current restructure continues to meet our goals and objectives. They'll provide us with some updated financial modeling tools that staff will continue to use throughout the year, and they'll also review and verify the user fees within the utilities. This is a preliminary project timeline. If approved, kickoff would begin this month, and much of August would be dedicated towards data gathering, so we'd be providing them with the information they need to conduct their analysis. An objectives workshop could be completed later this year, and then the balance of the project would be spent doing research and analysis on the utilities, and we expect review and findings, review of findings and recommendations to occur in the second quarter of 2022. So with that, staff recommends City Council per the contract with NewGen Strategies and Solutions and authorize necessary signatures. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. Penny, has this company worked for us before?
No, we have not done business with NewGen before.
Have they had experience with utilities this size before?
So the relevant experience that we identified were a couple of municipalities in Texas. Fort Worth and Austin were the largest, and they've done a number of cost of service analysis within that state, also Springfield, Missouri.
What about projects of the size that we have currently underway with the water treatment and the wastewater with close to $1 billion worth of expense coming over the next 10 years? I mean, have they had experience of that scope and size?
I saw you shifting, so I was just looking at you to make sure. No, there's going to be probably very few that have that caliber because, you know, the water treatment plant is the second largest in the nation. But I'm not aware of the type of projects that they've done, really the selection criteria focused on, their ability to conduct the work, which was the references that we checked for those other utilities, and then the depth and bench of their project team. And so that's primarily what we focused on, but I could definitely look into the projects that they have experience with as well.
Well, I'm just a little concerned, as Mr. Manning just alluded to in the last agenda item, GASB-89, and this previous COSA did not have that process. And now we've got two major construction projects that we're going to have to include that interest as part of the expense, not capitalize. And so I'm just worried about rate structure going forward, and hopefully that we're not looking for a huge sticker shock in the future. So I just want that to be part of the discussion as we're going through this. Really... Finance Director. I don't think your mic's on. Okay. Right, because we've promised the community a certain rate structure over the next several years, and so just fearful of that. Okay, thank you.
And I just might add, I think it's good timing, right? We don't always have the benefit of timing, so the COSA this year, with this GASB change, I think would be a good time to incorporate it as we're looking at the balance of things as well.
Yeah, because your schedule said two years before you made the recommendation.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussion on this item? Any discussion from the public? See none. There's no more discussion from the bench, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract with NewGen Strategies and Solutions and authorize necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk open a roll. With a total of seven yays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Start with the appointments of their appointments. Members of the council, Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Marcus J. Porter, Sr., to District 1 Advisory Board.
Further appointments, I would like to appoint the following employees who are elected to serve on the Wichita Employees Retirement Board of Trustees. They are Maria Bias, Mark Hall, Hannah Lang, Melinda Walker, and Johnny Chamberlain. Is there any further appointments? It's not them making a motion to accept the appointments.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk open a roll. Seven yays, those, motion to appoint those members passes. Back on announcements. Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to remind the community that 6:30 on Thursday, we're having an evening meeting to discuss the budget. Love to have everyone's input. Again, that is an evening meeting. Many of us hear folks request about that, and just want to make sure everyone knows.
Further announcements? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk open a roll. Members cast the vote. That motion does pass, and we will see everyone on Thursday. Thank you. That motion does pass, and we will see everyone on Thursday. Thank you.